Okay, we're going to call to order the town council meeting for Kensington for Wednesday, May 7th. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is a moment of silence, an opportunity to bring anyone up that we would like to think about. We, I'll, I'll mention he's technically supposed to go up here, but um, I think we should. So, thank you. So, uh, we'd like to remember the people who have been hurt in the fires in California. Um, I'll bring up on happy note, my daughter was promoted to Chief Petty Officer in the Coast Guard. So, we're going down in July for her ceremony. Anybody else? Okay, look at our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, we're going to start with the mayor and town council next on the agenda, excuse me, agenda. The Justice Park referendum question, uh, council, you've received the question and we just need to vote, make motion and vote on the approval tonight of the language. Any discussion? Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. We can come back.
Okay, so Alicia actually came up earlier to me, that's the question. I think it's actually worth considering whether we put one more line in here about what the vote was for town council, so people know that it was, it's coming on here because it was a
The referendum?
Yeah, the referendum is, is, you know, it says it was adopted.
Well, they were required to receive 362 votes. I believe they ca- um, they counted 367. There was like 79 votes or 79 signatures that were flagged, not necessarily because they weren't good signatures, but they either didn't show up on the voter list, which was a year old, so we didn't have the new one yet. Or they just couldn't read it. So, they, they made the amount. They, they made the 360.
Sorry, I wasn't clear what the vote was here on council for
Oh, I see.
Does it have a bearing?
I think it, I think it makes provides information to the fact that it was contested.
Oh, no, I only ask because I was thinking about that in my mind. Even if it were four to nothing, they could have moved forward with the referendum process, the referendum process that puts it on the ballot.
Yeah, but I mean, you could make a case that none of that rest of the information is valid. So why, why did Sue Ellen choose to include some but not other information? I think it's worth saying that it was a contested vote.
The reason that the rest of the wording is there is because that's taken directly out of the ordinance itself. I didn't use any language that wasn't descriptive of what's there. Because that's your job in terms of putting it on a ballot is to make it clear what people are voting for or against. And I don't know that the proponents would feel differently if the vote had been four to zero. Because that gives a different flavor to it. It really doesn't matter. It, it was adopted. And so, um, showing that some of the council members were for or against it, or all of them for it, or, you know, it
And it doesn't really tell you why.
No, but the point I'm making is that the descriptors that are there now are what the bill was intended to do, which is what is, needs to be on the ballot. How many people were for or against it in terms of the vote? You would not be, like I said, you won't, you wouldn't be getting this request if it was four to zero adoption.
And I guess the cases to be, could be made that you could get that information from other sources.
Absolutely. But the reason it wouldn't be asked if it was four to zero and it's being asked now if it, because it's split, is to put some pressure one way or the other in terms of how the voter sees.
Right, but the language, like you're saying, because we added the amendment of the one to one offset, right? Yeah, that was, that was the amount of the part.
Yeah, all of that comes directly from the ordinance. I did not deviate at all from that. So that's what's there and that's what you're explaining to people is this is, this is what the ordinance would do and you're for it or against it.
Okay, makes sense. Thanks.
Honor, you or Darren have anything? Anybody from the audience? And if you do, you need to go up to the podium, just give your name and your street.
Hi, my name is Alicia Schechter. I live on Wheatley Street. I do believe that putting the vote into the referendum provides necessary information to people who are voting on that referendum at the election. I have other things I could say, but I don't want to hold up the meeting. I'm, I'm just saying that I think you're withholding something important.
Okay. Thank you, Alicia. Anybody else want to comment? Oh, Joe?
Yes, thank you. I agree with the council member Engel. I think that that vote deserves to be in this ballot question. And it could simply be inserted in the first line of the referendum question. Right after the word was, the third word in the, in the ballot question, an ordinance was, comma, by a three-two vote, comma, adopted by the mayor and town council, et cetera, et cetera. It doesn't need to be very extensive, but I think that that bit of information is very important and it does tell the people in the town of Kensington that this is that this is an important issue and that the town council split on it. So, uh, I endorse council member Engel's, uh, uh, comments here. And I think it could be easily done as I just outlined. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question up there? Jody, did you have a question? You're waving your hand, but Alex, do you want to admit?
I mean, the, whether they, it, it, they could have gotten, they could have gotten the signatures, whether the vote was four, four to zero or five to zero or whatever. So I don't think it really makes a difference on, on how it was, how it was voted by the, um, by the council. I just don't see where, where it makes a difference.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment?
Yeah, I do, Merrick Furman. I, I think this enhances the transparency of this, of this ballot question. And I think it's, uh, it got on the ballot through a demonstration of grassroots democracy. And I think that, um, that this, uh, modest addition that I proposed would have the effect of, of making this ballot question even more transparent. So, yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I would just, I guess, take the view that like, sometimes we're lucky that people read our journal. I, and a couple of words isn't going to make a difference. I have complete faith that by the time people come into the election in June, they're going to know more than, then nobody's going to be looking at this ballot question and know nothing about the issue because we've been talking about it on the listserv. We put a bunch of journal articles in. I, I, I don't think saying adding was adopted by three-two vote is going to be material. I don't think, I'm not asking that it, that we add, you know, 20% of the registered voters of this town having signed a petition, this gets put on the ballot because that might suggest the support for is only 20%. I, I mean, I, I just, I, I don't, I, I don't think we should be invested in this decision. I, I, I'm willing to take the language that the attorney recommended and, and trust that people will know the merits of the issue before they vote on it.
Well, my guess is that when people signed the referendum, they hadn't read the ordinance either. So
Well, they were supposed to be provided during
Yeah, but I don't think people read it. So, not from what I saw.
No, and I, I hope they do because I think
I mean, it's, it's important. Okay, Connor?
I mean, I share Darren's view. I I get Joe's point that it adds a layer of transparency. I also wondered then where do you draw the line? There's more that we could push into this. So, you know, why did people vote the way they voted? What were their thoughts? But then you've got a 15-page ballot referendum. My hope, like, like Darren said, if a couple of words, I don't think makes a substantial difference. I hope is that when people get in there, regardless of the vote, how the vote came out, is that they understand the merits of why the council voted, what their feelings were towards it. What the town has is proposing to do with the proceeds to increase the square footage of parkland across the town to help offset costs for public works building that they see the, the net positives of it. So I'm not, I mean, I'm ready to just vote on the language.
Okay, um, Anne is online. Anne, I don't know if you're up, did you want to say anything?
I gather from the discussion that there was some sort of amended language that was being offered.
Yeah, I made, I made the suggestion that we put the vote on what the was, uh, three to two in the, in the ordinance language for transparency reasons. And then Sue Ellen made the point that it was just taken directly from the ordinance itself, all of the language. So adding anything now would possibly skew it in one direction or another. And I still feel it would improve transparency, but I do understand the argument that it's where do you stop then if you add more?
Right. I mean, knowing that this was the ordinance as was introduced and discussed, I I don't think we need to add language. I think we need to refer people to the, the full record.
Okay.
Because, because there's just so much information and it would be hard to, you know, keep amending the, the ballot question.
Right.
Yeah, I support that.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion? They're calling in the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the ballot question as presented by the town attorney.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And we don't need to add, it was approved four to zero.
I don't know, we could debate that.
No, we could debate that. Alright, so let's go back to the meeting minutes. Sorry, we missed that. Uh, I saw two people comment on the meeting minutes and they had no edits. So I am prepared to take a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from the April 9th town council meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and, um, I don't know, Matt or Sue Ellen, you want to take over the judgment?
I will defer to town attorney.
The, uh, I'm just going to generally describe what's happened. The town is, the defendant now in a case has been filed by the Bakers Union at 10401 Connecticut Avenue. It's for a declaratory judgment and that's when a party goes to the court and says that there's a dispute between two parties and they're asking the court to resolve that dispute. It is not, um, a claim for money. And, uh, they, the Bakers Union is seeking to overturn a covenant that was signed years ago, uh, with the prior owners of the property. So that was just recently served and the town will be answering that. And then as things play out, it'll just be handled as appropriate. And the attorneys will be in consultation with town council and the mayor as to what the best steps are to take.
So just a little background, the Bakers Union is the red brick building over here and they are, they want to sell it. So, and there's a covenant, the covenant of, is, uh, that it could only be an office building. So they're asking that the covenant be dropped. And they're also, um, what was my other thing that I was going to do? We do, oh, we have insurance, so that will cover our legal expenses. Very important that we have a, so, um, hopefully this will just be in front of the judge and we can clear this up pretty quickly. That's it. Any questions in the audience?
Hi, my name is Alicia Schechter and I still live on Wheatley Street. And I have a question. When I was reading some of the materials about this, it mentioned about the requirements that of access
Yes.
and concerns about access not being through Connecticut Avenue. So it just makes me wonder with the new Kensington crossing at the corner of Plyers Mill in Connecticut, what would happen with access and what's the plan for access and parking for that?
The access of parking is you, you can enter the building through Connecticut. I don't think it's an exit. I think it's only one. Is it a right-in, right-out? Okay. So that's, so, and then they actually are going to through the parking lot of the property next door, which is a joint ownership. So they're allowing an easement, so you would actually come out on Metropolitan Avenue to either turn left or to turn right.
Okay, so that new building can be entered from Connecticut Avenue?
Yes, correct.
But the existing one can't?
I mean, that's the way it was written back in the seventies, early seventies when that was built?
And you may not realize this, but there are three pieces of property.
Yes.
Mentioned through rectangles. We own the one along Connecticut Avenue.
Yes.
And so we allow them sidewalk and a sign. But not a road.
They're, they're not, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, that's good information. Thank you.
And of course, we own Reinhardt Park. So they're really, what they're selling is the center property. Alright, um, House Member Auburnas this year. We have a lot of our friends and residents here that are anxious to, um, we're just, um, done, unless anybody has any questions on the Bakers Union, further questions, council? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and go into number two. Um, go ahead. You have the floor. Yeah, just go up here, just give your, your name and, uh, your street.
Hey, everybody. Good to see you. I am a neighbor. Uh, my name is Gabe Auburnas. I'm one of your at-large members of the council. And I live on Saturday Avenue, the other side of Connecticut, but, um, I'm a big fan of Carmen's Italian Ice and the new taco plates that has come up. It's just been fabulous, but, um, it's a privilege to be here with all of you tonight. Um, just wanted to do a couple of things here to answer any questions that you guys may have. The council is in the midst of, this is our tax season if we were a town, because we are going through the budget deliberation process. And so we have, um, a lot on our plate. And as you all probably saw, uh, the county executive has proposed a budget that includes the possibility of an income tax increase, um, which is something that we are deliberating over. Have gotten a lot of, um, free job advice from a number of different residents and constituents. Um, and so we are, uh, in the midst of going through some very difficult decision-making and our public school system has come in with an understandably very large request that we are trying to wrestle with and reconcile with everything else before us. So, um, the, uh, on the calendar, um, and obviously will, will impact the town and all of our respective municipalities, but we will be, um, working on, uh, taking a straw vote by next Thursday and we will finish our committee work by Friday. And, um, we'll see where we land. Uh, but we did receive an update from our county's finance office. And it is clear that the numbers that they projected as revenue from a possible income tax increase are just a guess, um, because of so many federal employees that have lost their jobs. Um, and so that is very much a moving target. So, um, that is, uh, the, the big news from the council and I don't know, Tracy, how you want me to talk about other issues?
Well, we wanted to, you know, you, uh, I know you're very involved with the cannabis issue, which is why a lot of people are here today and their concern about cannabis stores being, um, allowed to open next to residential property that abuts the property. So we're hoping you could give some, uh, enlightenment on the legislative opportunities that there might be for the county council?
Yeah, absolutely. So I've learned a lot about this issue. Um, and this, of course, was passed by state referendum. And it is a very highly regulated industry, uh, in our state. And, um, I have had the opportunity to visit a couple of dispensaries myself and have been very impressed with their respective operations, but um, understand that it is causing concern among different members of the community who may have felt differently about this issue. And, uh, when the state legislature passed this particular bill, they did provide a mechanism for local jurisdictions to pass a zone tax amendment to establish our own set criteria for, um, where exactly these facilities can and can't be. And, um, one of the areas that we're looking at is that, consistent with our liquor stores, that they not be within 100 feet of residential neighborhoods. And so, um, we are exploring that legislation now and we have, um, we're working on drafting it. Our legislative process is a public process and so people will have the opportunity to weigh in and provide public testimony to let us know how they feel about these zone tax amendments. Um, we have, we think until July 1st, um, to be able to enact something at the local level. Our executive branch is working with, um, uh, the, the, the state cannabis folks, um, on some broader issues. But that is what we're looking at doing at the local level is passing legislation, uh, or introducing legislation that again would, would require the restriction within 100 feet, which was consistent with the development of our liquor stores, which are managed by the county, um, of course. So, um, that, that is, um, what we're hoping to introduce by next week. And, you know, receive some feedback on, um, at that point.
So this would not affect restaurants that sell alcohol, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I know that, uh, the cannabis store that is currently has a state license, but they don't have the county license yet. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Uh, but there's some, some, some back and forth between our county attorney, um, and the Cannabis Association because this is, you know, the, the bill hasn't been enacted for very long.
Right.
Um, and so we're, 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 it's sort of playing itself out, um, in different ways and, and this is one of them. So we're sort of learning as we go here. I do want to give a lot of credit to Delegate Jared Solomon, who's very, very helpful, um, in just sort of educating me about what happened in Annapolis. Um, I also have to say that I have, you know, I chair the county's Health and Human Services Committee and going into this legislation, I had my own concerns, particularly about other jurisdictions that, um, and, and, and the state of Maryland has really learned from the rollout of this in other states across the country and did their best to take into account in the enactment of the legislation to make it more reasonable and, and allow for us to be able to absorb this, uh, as a community. Um, and so, but i- it is still relatively new. Um, and we will see exactly where this takes us, but, um, I have spoken to Councilmember Stewart, who of course represents our district and is serving as our council president this year. Um, I give a lot of credit to her as well. She's been very helpful, um, in addressing this particular issue. And I've been keeping my colleagues abreast of where we are with all of this as well. We want to be reasonable. But we also want to take into account some of the concerns that have been raised by residents. Um, and, and of course, we want to try to find a sweet spot.
Is there a, uh, we, uh, you know, one of our residents, uh, had found two churches that were in an office building less than 300 feet from the proposed cannabis store. And for some reason, the county is not accepting them as places of worship. Is that correct?
So, as of right now, and I'm going to get an update on this tomorrow, um, our, uh, there's a question about whose jurisdiction that falls under. Um, the State Cannabis Association feels that it's the county and the county feels that it's the State Cannabis Association. So, um, there's some finger pointing going on right now, um, that we're working through. And again, this is all relatively new. It's, it's being rolled out in real time. And so, um, we are, we are working, we are working on resolving that question.
Okay, I mean, I know, um, Councilmember Crimmens did a little research himself today and do you want to say how you found out about, um, one of these?
I mean, one of the
Places of worship?
Places of worship is a broad catch-all term, um, but it also then goes to where you're located in, quote, traditional structure, the church, synagogue, mosque, temple. Non-traditional, like a commercial office building, uh, places of worship can also be in a private residential home. So then, to your point, council member, not only whose jurisdiction, but our question is what is the process of how they're going to do due diligence on the 500 feet and what is the data they're going to use? So in researching this, it looks like the county keeps a list of what they determine are places of worship. It's within the Montgomery County data set. There's currently 605 places of worship. But it looks like those are places that have a assembly permit. But if you have a congregation or membership or attendance under 50, you don't require that type of permit. You can have a business use permit, which it looks like are not being tracked. And so, how are they to find, this is very much a place of worship. It is in a non-traditional space. I talked to the pastor today, he's, their, their membership is about 30. So they have a business use license and I don't think for that reason it wound up on anybody's radar that they are a place of worship. And it leads to the bigger question of not only whose jurisdiction, but what is the process, right? What, what is the fair and reasonableness to say we did our due diligence? We looked at 500 feet. Here's what we looked at for primary school, a secondary school, a childcare, because that's another subcategory, right? If you have in-house childcare versus, you know, a kinder care, like, how are we determining where these things are located? It took our resident, I don't know, an hour and a half to find two churches that somehow neither the state nor the county either found, or they may, nobody may have looked because they thought the others were looking. Which then leads to the ultimate question, how do you issue, this is the state, but how did the state issue a license signing off that they, there was none of these protected areas within the 500 feet, but nobody checked if there were any of these areas within 500 feet?
I mean, I got the impression they just did a Google search, a Google Earth search. That was it.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I, I don't know exactly what criteria they used, but it's clear there's a lot of gray.
Yeah.
Um, and this is often the case with legislation like this. Not every scenario is necessarily thought, thought through. And if the legislature has to go back and just as we do on the council, enact laws and legislation that we have to revisit and then in different ways to address circumstances we couldn't have foreseen when we wrote the, wrote the legislation in the first place. But that'll be up to our friends in Annapolis to decide whether or not they want to pursue that. But we are going to, um, exhibit again, the provision within the law that allows local jurisdictions to provide the types of restrictions that we're going to provide within reason. So that's, um, that, that is being drafted now. Um, and, and we're, we're hoping to have that drop, presume.
Council member, quick question. Um, thank you for, for the, um, background. Do you have a sense, I know it's really new, fresh, but do you have a sense of, um, what the support is on the council for that provision, adding a, you know, drafting that piece of legislation that would disallow within 100 feet of, uh, residents? And related to that, is it the boundary line of the residence? Is it just the, the border? And related to that, is it the boundary line of the residence? Is it just the, the border? Just curious.
It's a good que- both good questions. I'm going to have an answer for you by noon tomorrow. Uh, because it's being drafted, but, um, I, I don't know exactly where folks stand right now. But I, one of my first pieces of legislation that I enacted from the council was, um, a zone text amendment to address vaping shops, um, in our community, which, um, you know, started to pop up and, and are not nearly as regulated, um, as our cannabis, um, uh, dispensaries. In fact, they're not regulated. Um, and so, uh, we did put provisions that required that they not be within a certain distance of schools or parks. Um, and, um, and that, that did pass unanimously on the council, but that was the previous council. Um, but again, because there's parallels, uh, generally with our liquor store policies, then that's, um, one of the areas of consistency that we're going to be focusing on, um, as a policy matter.
Okay, thank you. And then if it passes with this specific case apply?
Likely not.
Okay.
Cause, um, uh, laws like this cannot be retroactive.
Even if it's not decided and a permit was not granted, it's still delayed?
That I'm not sure of.
Okay.
Um, but, um, but that, um, we, we're not allowed to make zone text amendments retroactive.
Okay.
So, and, and I understand that portion of it. So the question is, can the, the, uh, the churches, the presence of the churches, that is a sensitive area, can be more pressure be put on DPS to, to say, to recognize them as sensitive areas? And how would you go about doing that?
Yeah, I know that, um, well, first, he's an amazing guy and I love him. He's an assistant C E O. Dr. Earl Stoddard.
Yeah, very great guy, really good guy.
As, as they say in business, he's on the second floor, that's before the, I'm executive.
Yeah.
So, um, Dr. Stoddard is running point for the administration on this issue. Um, and, you know, coordinating with all of the respective county agencies, permitting services being the primary one. Um, so he would be in a better position to be able to respond to that question. Um, but I know that he is working on this and trying to resolve this and, and seeing, you know, where, where we go from here. But, um, from, from my perspective, what I'm focusing on is, is the zone text amendment.
Okay.
Well, I, I, and I appreciate.
We'll get to the audience. We will.
I would, um, certainly hope that would move forward. But I guess maybe what I'm hoping for is your, you know, persuasive voice as well. Because here you have a law that says not within five hundred feet. And you, like you said, they're finger pointing, county saying it's not our law, state possibly saying it's not their law. It, it's somebody's law. And, and, and we shouldn't just ignore it because it's hard. And, and I, I think that waiting and I, I, I have a hard time thinking the state will want to be put in the position of saying, what is a real church and what isn't? And, and so, if they approve this permit, they're basically saying, these two are not real churches. And it just seems like that's a, a really difficult position to articulate.
resolves matters like this is the attorney general's office. Um, so, um, they, they, I know have been plugged in. Um, and so there will be questions raised there about resolving that specific issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll open up to the public. You'll need to come forward. Uh, Gabe, you probably need to just stand by. Cause I'm sure some of the questions will be directed to you.
Sure, sure.
So just go ahead one at a time and just give your name and your street.
Hi, I'm Matt Rand, uh, Farragut Avenue. I guess my question is to the town, uh, town council. Thanks, Gabe. Appreciate everything you're doing. Is there anything the town can do to also potentially pass an ordinance saying, hey, not, I mean, there's a law out there. What about, yeah, what about actually, uh, in, in the town itself?
Well, this is why we have our town attorney. So we're going to let her answer that question.
Um, you know, the council member, uh, is very clear about this is new, but what, how I view this is that the county has the power over zoning, except in some very narrow bands of authority. This, and they're approaching this as a zoning matter also by adopting the Z T A. And for zoning matters, unless the state separately gives the municipalities the ability to legislate in the area, the town doesn't have that. So that's why they can't at this point say what kinds of uses can be in the town and what types can't. That's a county level and a state level, but that hasn't been given to the town. At least in Montgomery and Prince George's counties, except for some municipalities have that. But, uh, have zoning power, but the town does not. And so that's how I've been looking at this from the legal side of it, is that this is a zoning issue, it's a use issue. And the county would have to say so on that, uh, rather than the town. And I don't know if there's any difference of opinion about that at the, at the county level.
Yeah. So, so not a lawyer, don't play one on TV, uh, but, um, but I think what you said is correct.
Yep.
Wait, you, you have to go up front. Sorry. I know. I know. I'm sorry. So just name and street.
My name's Leslie Westbrook and I live on Farragut Avenue and my whole backyard borders this dispensary. So I have a very vested interest in how this is decided. And if I'm understanding you correctly, what you pass by thirty first will have nothing to do with what's happening now. And the town has said they don't have the responsibility or authority to do it either. So are you saying that there is a vacuum there in the timeframe in which anything goes because nobody is going to make sure the regulations are in fact enforced?
I have to go up there and respond.
Yes.
Um, very reasonable.
Just sit right there and then you can jump up if you need to.
Um, very reasonable question. Um, I guess I'll try to answer in, in two ways. One, with regards to this specific application for this specific location. Sadly, um, depending on your perspective, there's not much we can do from a council perspective, because the zone text amendment will be prospective. Now, I don't know, to be candid with you, how many other licenses or how many other permits are being discussed at this moment? Um, so I, I, I don't know in this timeframe, how many more would be able to go through. Um, but I think once we have, you know, pending legislation, I would hope that that would be taken into account as discussions are being had at the state level over whether or not to issue licenses, but I'm not familiar with their process and I don't know how it works. Um, but that's, that's sort of where we are right now. And this, this issue was brought to my attention just a month ago. Um, and so we are, you know, working through this and have had great conversations with Matt, some of the members of the community. Um, and I've had the opportunity to meet with cannabis, cannabis dispensaries owners as well, um, who have, you know, credible businesses. And again, I've had the opportunity to visit a couple of them in other parts of the county. Um, and I've been impressed with their operation, but I think that, just my opinion, um, when the, um, when the states, um, enacted this legislation and they provided some of these provisions, I think that there was at least an intent, if you read the law, to not have them necessarily be within residential neighborhoods. And so, um, and, and again, that, that is the county's authority and we are going to, to, um, and try and, and to enact legislation and we'll see where my colleagues land. I'm not sure. Um, I do have a few co-sponsors, um, who have expressed interest in signing onto the legislation. And as part of the legislative process, I will discuss this with my colleagues and, you know, it'll go through, um, the legislative process.
Thank you. Did you want to follow up or anything? Go ahead.
Yeah.
You can. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm here for a minute. First of all, I really appreciate you coming tonight. You're a real person now, rather than just a note, a name on all the stuff that comes through my computer. So I appreciate it. And I appreciate how articulate you are and very open about what's going on and what the possibilities are. But I'm kind of stunned because what I'm hearing is that because anything that you all do enact won't take, won't apply to anything until after July thirty first. I'm in a hole. I'm in a hole. And I too only learned about this when the council did, which was after it was in the newspaper. So you kind of get the feeling that something they were trying to slip it in with the idea that it, they knew people were not going to like this. Now, I don't know whether that gets your eye up, but it sure bothers me. I like people to be honest, direct, open, transparent, and I don't feel like this has been the case at all with regard to this dispensary. At all. And I don't even know who to say it to anymore. You're, you're the first real person who's at least been able to tell me someone is ultimately going to take some responsibility for the endorsement, uh, for actual enforcement of the regulations that y'all are struggling with. They're, they're meaningless until you have the ability to actually make sure they're followed. And, and to say to me, as I was told last month, it's coming. Well, I'm not opposed to it coming. I think it's great. It's been a long time in coming. However, I don't want it, the boundary of my backyard to be the boundary of their backyard.
Yeah.
Please, if there's some way I can write someone or you could tell me, send me a memo, something so that I don't feel so paralyzed with regard to this. It's taken up a lot of time this week in particular. And I do want to say one more thing with regard to money. If it's, I, I have the feeling that if this was not a marijuana dispensary, but an ice cream store, the taxes that would be collected would be less for the money they take in. And so I think that that is sort of a sub, subterranean issue here with regard to our town. And I, I don't want to, you know, make people feel hurt by that. I'm just saying I've been around a long time and I know how money is usually part of the issue of any big decision. So please help us out here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good.
Somebody else want to say a few words? Go ahead. Yep. Come to the podium. Say your name and your street.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name's Christina Benton Cor Johnson and I am on Prospect Street. Um, I, I actually wanted to just make a comment. Uh, I think your concerns are really valid and I can understand where you're coming from. Um, the line is not in my backyard. Um, I, I want to provide some context though, for what I'm also going to say. So I'm the first African American and Latina in America to have what's called a vertically integrated licensed set, which means I can cultivate, I can do extraction, I can also distribute. I'm a multi-state operator, which means I can operate in more than one state and have dispensary licenses in more than one state. I sit on the board of the United States Cannabis Council. In addition to the National Hispanic Cannabis Council, I lobby at the federal level, the state and the local level. Um, served the community for years, has sat on several boards, uh, in Montgomery County. Um, and have been involved with cannabis for like the last seven years. I'm also one of Wes's or Governor Moore's appointee to the Oversight, um, Committee of Medical and Adult Use Cannabis in the state of Maryland. So I've got some history with the industry. Um, cannabis has been legalized in Maryland for more than a decade from, for medical use. Um, the zoning laws, more or less eighty-five percent have been pretty consistent for the last decade. Um, not a whole lot of new stuff there. Um, adult use was enacted through the Cannabis Reform Act fairly two years ago, so fairly new. And then House Bill eight oh five addressed adding houses of worship in as a sensitive location in addition to schools and a few other spots that I think you spoke to earlier. Um, the five hundred foot setback is not in Comar, but it is in statute. And the M C A, which is the Maryland Cannabis Administration, is who regulates cannabis and who issues licenses to those who have applied for them in the state of Maryland through pretty arduous processes. If in fact, we wanted to as a council or community, understand how the state evaluates who should be licensed and, um, therefore issue to, yes, go ahead, you can go to where you're going, it's through the M C A. And so O A G absolutely has heard and addressed several cannabis issues. But the M C A is where you would actually want to start with, like, just understanding the process or Comar or the regs. Um, and really the only zoning change has been enacted in twenty twenty-four, I think House Bill eight oh five, which was that addition. So, I mean, I just, I want to say like, there have been a lot of things that have happened in the last decade with regards to cannabis and what's permissible, what's not. Um, and there are people, I think readily available to discuss it. On the house side, we have some very strong leaders, senate side, really strong leaders, they're vocal. There are two offices in particular, probably Antonio Hayes on the senate side, senate finance regulates. And then on the house side, it's, uh, C T Wilson. So I just wanted to put that out there so that we're really clear about avenues. And for the last five years, there have been ongoing conversations that have been very public, have been in the newspaper consistently, nothing new about it, um, where we have discussed with local jurisdictions through M A C O, how counties get involved in the legislative process, how they can expect change, what they can and can't do with regards to zoning, because they have, I mean, they have the power of zoning sort of right within, no pun intended, their backyard. Um, so that's all I kind of wanted to say there.
Christina, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Um, with all this, mine goes back to what I said earlier. Do you have any understanding of what the process is and who is in charge of reviewing the five hundred foot from these protected areas?
I do.
Can you answer it?
Yeah. Were you asking, you asked me, did I have insight? Were you asking me to tell you about the process?
Yeah, because, yeah. And I will just say I've made phone calls and I'm getting.
Sure.
Kind, it's the county and the county is saying it's the state.
Yes, the state.
And.
It's the state. The Maryland Cannabis Administration, which was created in twenty twenty-three through legislation. It was previously the M M C C, is responsible for doing the official licensing of a business. That license comes only upon them getting sort of placard approved for their locations and then going through years in some people's cases of fights at the local level about where they can go, where they can't go, all of these little tiny details, and then also getting their place operational. And so the final license then comes after final review and approval from the M C A. And they are the ones that at the beginning and at the end of the process say, yes, you're outside of that five hundred foot setback. So they are the ones that do the regulatory enforcement for the law that is in statute, obviously. The, for the statute that is enacted by our general assembly.
Do you know how, what records do they check for like childcare and for place of worship specifically?
So what I will say is that that is not my area of expertise, but when I went through that process, they do have lists. And my understanding is it is based on state registrations. So whatever that means, again, I am not the expert there. Um, but there is a new, uh, director that was just voted, or not voted in, they were just appointed and by the general assembly in this past legislative session. Um, her name is Tabitha Robinson, and she would be the one that can help you answer that question with some more precision. I, that not, not my expertise.
Is it follow up to what Connor was saying? So are you getting the back and forth saying it's, it's the county, it's the state? Because we're somewhere in the middle of that process right now with this one. It's, they've approved it provisionally and they have to do the final approval, but they're waiting for the D P S to issue the permits and they won't because they don't, they don't want to make that decision. So we're kind of stuck in the middle. Is that where we are right now?
So my understanding, based on what I've heard and what I've read, is that there are two different processes that have to occur. You have to be given approval by the state regulatory agency for your business use, for your business location and ensuring that you meet all the statutory requirements as well as the regulatory requirements for your use in cannabis. That's on the left-hand side of this mic. On the right-hand side of the mic is that you have to also meet all of the other requirements that any other business has to meet inside of a jurisdiction. So if you've got to get a permit for fire, for what, whatever you got to get your permits for, you would have to also secure those from the appropriate agency or department. In Montgomery County, that is through Montgomery County. Absolutely through permitting services. So the county does have to, they are not responsible for the five hundred foot setback. They are responsible for their own rules. So within the county, there are no rules. then they're required to issue the permit and they can get sued for that if they don't issue it. It's very, it's actually clearer than we think. And there's been a lot of back and forth, lots of conversation, but also there's law. The law says it's five hundred feet. If you want to do something different than five hundred feet, go wild. It can't be more burdensome than alcohol and beverage, though, because that that also became law two years ago. But if there's not anything in place right now.
That's maybe the clearest I've heard described. And then my question is simply deeper into the left-hand side of the mic.
Yes.
What is that process? What are the databases and records, right? Because to the council member's point, like, legislation was passed. But when you go to enact it and you go to build the processes to to enforce the regulation, I wonder if it kind of got a little off track here, in in the sense of what is a place of worship? And your question is, what is, under the eyes of the state, a place of worship? Does it have to be in a traditional building? Does it have to have a membership over X number of people? Does it have to meet on a specific date, right?
Still fear.
Yeah, we've had two have been identified that are within the five hundred. They weren't hard to find, which leads to the question, what did the state do or not do that led them to not finding them?
I think cannabis is an ever-changing ever-changing and really dynamic space because of us being at the federal level illegal and at the state level in more than thirty-five states legal. And so what you have is a super dynamic environment and all of us are constantly having to pivot and be reactionary and try to stay ahead of the law, which is a challenge, as you all know. Your town attorney is probably best positioned to draft correspondence, not like I'm volunteering, but I, you know, to draft the question properly to Director Robinson and perhaps CC, her in-house counsel from OAG, who can then respond and help explain what their internal process is for identifying the setbacks and then those identified locations within the state that qualify or don't qualify. Because the internal regulatory moves are not visible to us. As business owners, for sure. Much less ordinary citizens. This, you know, how they do what they do in the regs is sort of not on the left or right-hand side of this mic. It's like outside the door around the corner. There we go.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
She is a rock star, by the way. She's engaged in a number of different efforts in the community. She's been a mentor to kids, and so I feel fortunate to call her a friend. So to follow up on your points and to follow up on some of the points that were made, the executive branch, vis a vis the county attorney, does feel that the permit was not, was not issued properly. And so a letter is being developed to send, to pose the question and to please relook into this specific issue. And and that that will hopefully trigger the review once again of the license that has been issued for this specific facility. I hear you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I appreciate that. And and again, you know, as as, and I followed the legislation from a public health perspective. And I think there was an interest in wanting to make sure that everybody wins here. And and I think there was an intent in having the dispensaries be in locations that everybody felt more comfortable with, including the dispensaries. And so I think that's where we are. So I will follow up tomorrow to make sure that that letter is sent. And I will make sure that we get a response. And we'll see where we go from there. In the meantime, I I will push forward with, you know, establishing some reasonable level of regulation at the local level, which is within the one hundred feet. I have to figure out whether that's where on the property line that will be. I'm getting an update on that tomorrow. But again, it's based on on what we've passed in terms of ordinance with liquor stores in the past. So I think that's where we are.
So is there anything we can do to, you know, support letter or something like that, once you've you know, put your letter together, if you, you know, CC us, then we could add on to that.
Would be great. And the letter that you all originally wrote a month and a half ago that brought this issue to my attention in the first place, I mean, this can be a follow-up to that. And now we know who to direct the letter to, which is super helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else want to say something? Sure, go ahead. One at a time. Name and street.
John Anderson. Very good afternoon. I'll be quick here. Just for your question. As far as due diligence, I took fifteen seconds when this first issue first came up and came over the church in Google Maps.
Right.
Uh, Google Maps may be changing its spine. It looked, at at first it appeared like it was in the Giraffe Building. Well, is that a, that's a Schlesinger building?
That's a Schlesinger, old Schlesinger building, yes.
Now it is over in the Concord Building on Concord Street. So and there was a comment earlier about we actually met with the pastor. Where is this place?
He's in the Schlesinger building. There's, there's more than, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And oh, the Concord Building does have a church as well. Iglesias Day.
It's a Spanish.
Fifteen seconds.
I know. Yeah.
But thank you for that information.
Good, next. Oh, well, he's online.
Hello, I'm Bob Sacks. I'm also a resident of Farragut Avenue and neighbors to all these fine folks here and next-door neighbor Leslie. And so my property, I would say, is within zero feet of this new proposed dispensary. And I share everyone's feelings too about if it was across the street next to the liquor store, there's a liquor store, there's a bar across the street. We've got no problems with that. Fine. It's 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 the fact that it was literally this, you know, we're worried about activities literally being where on the other side of the fence where my kids are playing. That's the problem. It's not the problem with dispensary or cannabis, right? It's just, it's just the proximity. And so I think this proposed legislation is, let's just treat it the same as the liquor store. And that seems completely reasonable. And does, and I'm glad that this thing is is going forward. And I just, I guess it's interesting to hear from the cannabis perspective of like, hey, we want to be good members of the community. So to me, it's a little confusing why someone would want to open up a store that is directly adjacent, abutting my property and and Leslie's property and why, you know, I understand there's a lot of hoops to go through, but don't you want to be good neighbors too? And say, hey, we can find a place across, there's liquor, none of us have any problems with the liquor store across the street. It's fine. So I guess, like, thinking through just like, if everybody, you know, this win-win idea, you know, it just, I think, I think what's upsetting to us is that it felt like, it felt like someone was trying to sneak it in. It felt like they weren't taking into consideration the neighbors and what, and and I, and I'm glad that the attention's been called, but I guess it's more of a common than question, but I guess, I guess we all felt like a little bit powerless because it's like something's happening right next to us. And we're not opposed to it in general, but it just felt like we were kind of locked out of the process until we all kind of raised up and said, hey, this is not cool with us. So I guess my question of the counter, maybe, is is what can we do to just be a little bit more empowered? And maybe we're doing it now, but it just felt like the way this all happened just felt a little shady. Yeah, that's my comment.
Yeah, fair points for sure. And I wish they could say this is the the only example of where the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, but, you know, I've been in government now for twenty years. And it is not sadly the only example. But in this case, I think it is going to have a reasonable solution and outcome. And while it was painful to get where we are now and caused a lot of anxiousness and anxiety, I I credit you guys, frankly, for bringing this to our attention and and the town as well. And I think, you know, forging these types of alliances gives me a little bit more faith that the system does work from time to time. And so all, how often you guys meet?
Once a month.
Once a month. All right. So hopefully by this time next, next month, I'll have more updates.
Okay.
And obviously, you guys literally know where I live. I live on Summit Avenue. I think now you all know where I live. And so we can, we can obviously stay in communication, but I think a letter would be great from the town.
Sure.
And and I would love to get the contact information for the immediately adjacent neighbors too, because your voice in particular needs to be heard here. And and we may reference you or encourage the county attorney to reference you in the letter.
Thank you. Okay. Um, now you want to get up?
Todd Frank, I live on Farragut with everyone else. And I'm not going to repeat what everyone else has said, but I just want to say, I thank you for coming, actually. One thing I've been sort of disappointed by, and I think a lot of us said, we haven't heard from the actual owners.
I don't know who they are.
Why do who they are? I would love to hear, I'd love to hear their explanation for doing this process in this way. I don't think any of us, or maybe we do, have any problem with the marijuana aspect of it. I think it really is the proximity and also just the five hundred foot barrier laid out in the state statute is very clear. And then, you know, because these don't have like a steeple and they're not prominent, they somehow get treated as others. And you know, I've spoken to the pastor of one of the churches and he's against this, but he doesn't really feel like he has the power to speak up, right? And this also benefits us as well, right, to to speak up, but it it also benefits him as well. So I'm hopeful. I mean, it's been aggravating trying to chase down who's responsible for this. You know, lots of other folks have tried as well. You know, the county, city's county, you know, state, state, city's county. So I'm looking forward to this getting resolved and yes, let's say thank you for everyone's effort.
One more update.
So, good.
Staff working on this. So the the legislation will be introduced on Tuesday. And it will be expedited so that it's passed by July first, the deadline that local jurisdictions can pass and enact legislation provide some reasonable ordinances. I would like to humbly request, if you all are available, to testify when there is a public hearing for this, because there may be one or two colleagues who you know, may have understandable questions and been hearing directly from community residents, because everything everybody has said is infinitely reasonable. And so I think having that voice heard as well as the town would be terrific. So I'll give you the specific date of when that public hearing will be. You'll have about two weeks notice. It's on Tuesdays. You can do them virtually. You don't have to be in Rockville. Rockville's beautiful this time of year. And we will, we'll go from there. Thank you.
I will pass that on to Mayor Ashton, that you think Rockville is beautiful.
Matt, right, Farragut Avenue, just one quick guy for you all as you are moving this process forward. I did file a complaint to the Cannabis Commission officially. I've heard zero back from the commission. I also have sent letters to virtually everybody out there, including the the governor. I've heard nothing back. Give you the, you and the town are the only public officials that have responded to any of my correspondence. So just flagged that for you. Maybe the Cannabis Commission, I know it's new. Right. But they should at least respond to an official grievance and other letters and emails, even to the executive of the commission.
I, Matt, I think our response from the cannabis was that it's not our problem. It's the county. It's a bit more or less what they're
They did respond. We did
Yeah.
reach out to Director Robinson. We did get a response from them and they deflected to
To the county.
County's wanting for the UNO and the permitting.
Right.
Yeah.
So maybe you'll have better luck with them. Yeah. Does anybody else would like to? Oh, Al, sorry. Okay, well, I'm going to start with Al, because I can see his name.
All right. Hi there. Maybe I should go last, because I was going to change the topic slightly.
Okay. Uh, who else is up? I can't see.
Roger.
Oh, Roger. Go ahead, Roger.
I live on Farragut Avenue, married to Dr. Westbrook, who you heard from earlier. Is, I understand that the county provides a permit also, as well as the state? Is is that what I heard earlier?
So any business, just as it would be with any business, you know, sprinklers, all of the requisite requirements, but it's not specific to cannabis. What what I will be doing in the Zone Text Amendment that I propose will be specific to cannabis dispensaries. They can't be within one hundred square feet, but all of the other cannabis-associated policies, as we have learned better than anybody else has explained tonight, is done at the state level.
Okay, so the the county does provide a permit as though we're a normal business. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Any, any of the requirements that would be commensurate with any sort of retail business, you know, those same provisions would apply, would apply.
Okay, and 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 has that permit been granted yet, or do you know?
Not, not the use in occupancy.
Not the use in occupancy.
Okay.
But they, it's still sitting with the Department of Permitting Services, because there's this other issue that has not yet been resolved. And so they feel somewhat stalled, but per what is in their jurisdiction, I think it's safe to say they were prepared to move forward, but in light of all of these other issues, they're holding off.
So it would, I, a lawyer would know whether or not you could ask them to hold off until you have a vote at the county council on the issue of the hundred-foot distance from residential areas, or would that be?
I'm not sure that we are, we we can do that, but what we are doing is is going to, as we said, we're going to pursue the state angle directly, which is, but we also are going to solicit the Attorney General's office, whose assistant attorney general is assigned to this case. But we are going to raise this up the flagpole within their office.
So if if I were a member of the county council, I would go to the permitting people and say, can you hold off on this until the council has a chance to vote on the hundred-foot issue? And then if it passes, the council say, I'm sorry, we can't give you a permit. But I don't know if that's legal or not. That would be an attorney have to, I mean, I obviously don't want the the county to be sued on this issue.
Yeah, we can't do anything out of the, yeah, we can't do anything out of the regulatory process that's been set forth. So we're going to pursue the angles that are the appropriate angles.
Okay, the the final question I have is, if this comes to pass and the dispensary does open up, are there any zoning regulations that control the hours that it can be open?
I don't know the answer to that, but it looks like we might have an answer.
Lots, lots. Yeah.
So, yes, there are regulations for literally everything. From hours of operation, there's no smoking anywhere around the dispenser in the property location. Typically, like, what you're looking at is like, as the crow flies for lot lines at the state level, but that's not written anywhere. You also, you have regulations around about who can work there, like, they have background checks. You have security requirements, like, every single inch, basically, of the dispensary has to be covered with three sixty cameras. That has to be monitored. There has to be backup. Most dispensaries
Can I just interrupt? My main concern is, since this will be a few feet from my bedroom, whether or not they're going to be open at one in the morning.
No, they will not be open at one in the morning.
What time, whether there are hours? Would you have, what are the regulations for hours?
I believe it's nine to nine.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Christina, can I ask you one more question, since you are a literal resident? Again, I know I'm somewhat kicking a horse on my issue of did the state err in issuing the license? I want to make sure I understand that. There is a specific dispensary that is looking at this location.
Are we talking about the bank building?
Yeah, the bank.
Yes, okay.
And if we are saying, hey, that that location is not appropriate, I don't think it's a, hey, we're looking for you company LLC to lose your license. We just, what is the difference? They have the license, they're just looking for a location.
They don't have a license. The license, final licensure is issued upon final inspection. Final inspection of the the premise by the MCA, which comes after you have your use in occupancy.
Okay.
So there is, this process is not written, by the way. So we're tracking together in this, in this meeting. But once you get your final permitting from your jurisdiction for all of the required permits, and it varies by jurisdiction, then the MCA will come and do a final inspection. That inspector has a list, actually, what they're looking for. They will then give you, hey, you passed, you didn't pass, is what you need to correct here, the corrective measures. And then eventually you will get your license.
If you can, you know, remedy all of those issues.
Correct.
But if it is found that there is a protected area within the five hundred foot setback that you cannot correct, would they issue the license?
I am not Director Robinson. She is relatively new. If I were new in my role, I would be very careful and I would look at precedent. And she is an attorney. She's a Harvard-trained attorney. She is sharp. I would look at what has been done historically. And you don't get approval to go into a space And you don't get approval to go into a space without having been approved for the five hundred foot setback. Like, that is vetted before you go and get your property. Most people would do that, but like, you can do that. You can send your location to the MCA, get approval, and then move forward. The new licensees are different. I don't know, there were three rounds of licenses, more or less. One in twenty fourteen, fifteen, they had their own set of rules. Then those that came through twenty twenty-three House Bill, or twenty twenty, House Bill two, they had their own set of rules. And then the new licensees had their own. I don't know what this owner is and what category he falls into. But depending on what round you came in, you had a different set of requirements placed upon you by the MCA. When I came through for my first set of licenses, I had to get approval on my location. Before I got the location. So if they already said yes. I don't know if that would be reversed, but I'm sure they'd be willing to look at it with the right motivation. The right person asking the question. Okay, and I'm really sorry. I will say this. Most business owners try to be really good neighbors. You know, most of us go into the community. We talk to people before we come in. We get to know people. We build relationships with nonprofits. We have community impact. We do all of these things prior to moving in. That doesn't always happen, but most of the time that is the case.
Anyone else? Oh, Al, sorry. Is there anybody? I don't see any of their hands. Okay, okay, Al, go ahead.
All right, I wanted to switch to the non-controversial topic of income tax increases. So, good evening, everyone. Al Carr, I live on Washington Street.
Are you, you're switching topics before we finish this one out? Is that what you're asking?
Well, Councilmember Albarnos did mention in his remarks that. Is considering the county executive's proposal to change the piggyback income tax. It's currently three point two percent, and the proposal is to change that to three point three percent. So municipalities get, my understanding is seventeen percent of the income tax collected within their jurisdictions. So if, in the event that the county council decided to increase the piggyback income tax, that would, that would tend to benefit municipalities like the town of Kensington for our budget. Isn't that so?
He's talking to you, Gabe.
I don't know, Al. That's a good question. I can follow up. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that. So, but I will ask first thing tomorrow, whether or not that's in fact the case.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions on cannabis? Rob, you gotta, you gotta go, I'm sorry.
Well, today's, we're in, or sorry, it's first week in May. You said it's gonna be passed in July, and this thing's being held up. And it's gonna be reviewed. So it's really only two months we're waiting to figure it out, because, well, if you enact it, if it passes, you're saying that it would be effective as of July, and if they don't have the permit by that date, then it's over, right? Is that, I just want to understand, like, it's really, we're only sweating it out for two months at this point.
I don't, I don't know. So, because I think that it sounds like it's, it's been, the license has been given. Or no. To be honest, I'm gonna have to get back to you with the response to that. Because, again, we're sending the letter by Friday. We'll work with the town. We will get the answer to that question. We will let the powers that be know that from the county's perspective, we don't believe that this is a permissible location, because there are not one but two faith-based congregations within five hundred feet. However you define faith-based congregation is not our issue, it's the state's. But these are two faith-based organizations. So, so we are going to request that they revisit this particular issue and rule accordingly that this facility does not comply with the regulations set forth by the state. That is our, that is what we hope the outcome will be, and we believe will be. It's separate from the legislation. The legislation is more prospective, so that this doesn't happen again, or, you know, we clearly define regulations moving forward. But sadly, this, this particular facility would not be subject to the zone tax amendment.
Go back, go back.
Sorry, and I'm sorry to delay, but what I heard was final license doesn't happen until there's a final inspection. Which theoretically, if you're delaying, if they're gonna have to go back and look at it, I don't know, maybe they have to answer my grievance. I don't know what the process is and all this stuff, but theoretically, your law passes before they get final license.
But I think the problem is you're allowing this person to continue through the process. And they get to the very, I'm just saying, to the very end where they've put out a lot of money fixing up this building, and then you say, oh, I'm sorry.
But they could have done a fifteen second Google search.
Yeah, I know. I'm not, I'm not excusing them, but it is a reason for them to sue the county because of the amount of money that they put into. Not that they would win, but that's where it would probably end up going. Not seeing how you agree with it, but that is where they would go.
I, I watched, I stand in my bedroom, back window, watch what's going on over there, and there's no activity. And I was told that they were holding off to find out what the final ruling was. So I don't believe that they're putting a lot into it. They did have some yard people over there to clean up the yard. But that's it, as of right now. The other thing that I just want to say, and I'm sorry to be continuing on this. If there's some way, something could be said where I could, all I have to do is step over a fence to be in their yard. The hundred foot thing, that's even extreme in terms of what I'm looking at. And if that could be mentioned in this five hundred foot thing, I think it would really help.
So just on our expertise on cannabis. So at some point, would they fall into the legislation if they've stopped working on the, on the building? They're not moving forward with that?
Can you repeat your question, just make it clear?
What point does the person who is expecting to get the license, would they decide this isn't working for me, and then they walk away? Is there a point where they would walk away?
That's the, I'd be trying to guess what another business owner's position would be. What I can say is cannabis businesses are taxed at the federal level with an effective seventy to seventy-five percent tax rate. So every dollar earned off the top, it's seventy, seventy-five percent gone. We just voted at the general assembly session, this last session, to raise taxes, thank you Governor Moore, from nine percent on cannabis to twelve percent. So you're talking about a lot of money gone. So you have very small margins in cannabis. Why I say that is that most of these people are working for years before they get their license. I was given a preliminary license in twenty twenty-one. I opened my store in January eighteenth of twenty twenty-five. You're talking about four years worth of work before you open your doors. I just want to demonstrate that there is a will to have the business in, in, in most people's cases. And the desire to walk away, like, ah, didn't work out for me, slim to none. You cannot get any FDIC insured bank to bank you. My employees can't even get loans at their banks because they work in cannabis. All of this to say, it is a, it is a grind. And so for someone to just like, ah, it's not gonna work out for me, most, most of us are lawyered up pretty, pretty tight. And so it's, you know, everybody's got lawyers these days, but the point is, for someone to just walk away. Again, I don't know this individual, but it's, I mean, it's not anything I did. I fought for years.
All right, that's helpful. Thank you. All right, gotta go. Thank you so much, Gabe. Appreciate it. Thank you. Well, I think the council is in agreement that we will tag on a letter to whatever Gabe is sending. I know you guys are a little bit disappointed, because I've talked to many of you, that we really don't have authority in this. And I know everybody thought we could wave a wand and make it go away, but there are certain things that, as a council, we don't have control over things, and zoning is one of them. So we have a very minimal amount of oversight on houses, on residential homes, setback density and heights, but after that, we, we don't know anything else until somebody moves in and asks for an electrical permit, plumbing permit, and a sign permit. So we don't find out what businesses are coming in until they call and say, I need a permit, usually for a sign. No. Well, the signs, yes, yes, signs we do. Yes, so, so that.
And signs are another thing that, at least in the state regulation, are very deliberate about what can be signed, how they can be signed, what can be mentioned, so that it, my words kind of more or less blends in. And it's not, its use is not obvious.
Yeah, the Michael plumbing sign, which has now been turned off, is not in our jurisdiction. We have no control over that. But we did complain about it, and it was not permitted. So that's why it's probably not on right now, and that you can thank us for complaining about it. But my guess is they'll bring it into compliance, and at some point it will come back on. But that is out of our jurisdiction, so we have no control over that. I know, you gotta go. Yeah, we are gonna write the letter. Well, we can do that, yes, and, and we will, and we will.
The last comment I, I, I will make, somebody, and Robin might have been you, had mentioned, like, I don't know if we are, as residents, doing what we can or what we should. I'll take it back to the very beginning. We don't get notice as a time, you may think, like, how did you not know this was coming into town? Businesses come and go from the town all the time. There's no notice that we are given, but as soon as we found out from residents sending the same blog article that you all read, you know, that same day, the mayor, myself, started getting on the phone, we talked to Matt, we talked to the town attorney, we started calling the county. The same things we were doing, right? We were researching, we were learning, we were starting to ask the questions. The speed of government sometimes is it took that four weeks for everybody to kind of be like, wait. All right, we all collectively now understand that everybody's pointing in opposite directions. I wish something had come sooner. And I'm really grateful to the mayor for getting Councilmember Albarnos here in person. You can see, you know, it was very important to him that he be here and not on Zoom. So that's to say, like, if you see something, say something, right? Send us an email, stop us at the park, shoot us a text. You know, we will jump on these issues. You know, we don't have a crystal ball that we always know every single thing that happens in the county.
So I did find out a beauty school is going in where urban thrift runs, so I did find that out. Okay. You're gonna take classes yourself there.
So, hey, guess what? My name is still Alicia Schechter, and I have not yet moved to Farragut Avenue yet. I live on Wiggly Street. But I did want to talk about the definition of a hundred feet. Because we've, we've heard about as the crow flies, is it from here, is it from there? So it's entirely possible that your door is on one street and their door is on another street, and there's more than a hundred feet between your doors, and I don't like that. I think, I think it has to be, and I, I hope that you will work with the county council to remind them that it has to be maybe a hundred feet between the closest points.
Yeah, yeah, lot lines. Yeah, it's not gonna be the middle of your living room.
Exactly.
So, Alan, in other zoning issues, how is distance determined? Lot lines?
Same with noise ordinance, by the lot line.
It also depends on what it says, because sometimes they change that. Generally speaking, it would be the lot line.
Unless it's specific, like there's, there's specificity on the signage. It has to be a certain way, but with the noise ordinance, so it's implied, it's the lot line.
So I guess in this case, we'd want to look at the alcohol regulation and how it has defined the distance.
That's very useful to look at. Because they've been doing this for a long time, and they had their sensitive properties for that too, and so they've had to interpret that for a long time.
Okay, good. All right, anybody else? We're good? Guys happy?
You all for coming.
Good, thank you so much. Wait, what? You don't want to see us pass a budget? All right, good, good. We got it covered. We're being sued, that's okay. Well, hopefully, we'll, we'll be out of here before nine. So, Alan, I think, I think we're good. If you do want to head on back over to PG. Yes, thank you so much for being here. I think we got everything else covered here, so we will move down to reports from the council. So who wants to start?
I can be quick.
That can be quick.
Should I go?
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to send a letter to the Highway Administration requesting or designated person to work with for implementing our bicycling and pedestrian priority area plan, or PIPA plan that was officially passed July first, twenty twenty-four, so it's almost a year now. And we still do not have effective coordination with the state on implementing some of the shorter term measures that come up in the plan. So we're going to request the focal point to work with, coordinate, and take advantage of things like the striping that's being done on Connecticut Avenue to narrow the lanes as recommended in the PIPA plan. So we have that draft, and Tracy's gonna send it this week, I think.
I can do it tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And along those lines, we have quarterly meetings with SHI, which we're going to, you know, we talk about all the issues we're working with them and collaborating on. And continuing to push these improvements in pedestrian bicycling access and safety. We'll have another meeting coming up in the next month or so to, to, to continue liaising with them. And then the only other thing I would like to mention is that we completed the Mobility and Traffic Committee and P-BASS Pedestrian Bicycling Access and Safety Working Group, completed our bicycling and walkability audit. We do it every two years, where we literally look at every street and identify areas for improvements. Take a bunch of photos, put in a database. The co-chair, Alan Simon, and I will be meeting with you, Matt, tomorrow, right? Tomorrow to go over the recommendations. There's like maybe eight priorities, and these are much more, I mean, we've done most of the things that we've identified over the previous two audits. So these are more around, you know, cutting shrubs and cutting back visibility, you know, improving invisibility, identifying some significant, we've identified some significant areas of sidewalk that are cracked or dripping hazards and so on. So they're more of, more small, minor issues. That's it for me.
Okay, great. Darren? Oh, Anne, are you there?
Yes.
Do you want to add anything?
Just briefly, I want to thank Carolyn Morrissey with our Greenscape Committee for organizing Master Gardeners and coming up with a plan with two local businesses, and they've now installed some native plants in front of the Look Again resale shop, Prevention of Blindness, and Compass Art Center. So this was a new effort, and take a look when you're walking around town. I just want to thank Carolyn and her team.
Yeah, I saw Look Again, and it looked fabulous. It really looked great. Really, really nice. Okay, Darren?
I don't really have much to go over since the last meeting. I, I've looked at this last term as an opportunity to help Matt with code revisions. And I haven't done a great job about that, but I, I would hope to either send you things before my term ends, June, or you might get emails from me after.
Just a couple. Anne and I and the Parking Committee met on May second. A big thank you to them, but a bigger one to Matt and to Annie, our COVID and Parking Enforcement Officer. We had a chance to sit with staff and get a sense of how, you know, everything from signage to hotspots, to enforcement and challenges with enforcement, and gave us a lot of insight, which will be really helpful as we start to think about how the parking needs and challenges in the town are evolving. Second is a reminder, dates have shifted a little bit on the Montgomery County Public Schools Boundary Study. This is a chance for public engagement on the reopening of Charles Woodward High School. Earlier in the process, they were thinking the dates would be next week. They've shifted a little bit. There are virtual sessions being held. There are virtual sessions being held, uh, Tuesday, May twenty seventh. Uh, you can find that on the county's website. There's one from eleven to twelve PM, one from twelve to one, and then one from six thirty to seven thirty PM, and one from seven thirty to eight thirty PM. Those will all be on Zoom. The links are not yet available. They are coming soon. There's also an in-person session for the boundary study, uh, as it pertains to Woodward. Again, they are running, uh, four sessions, two at Wheaton High School and two at Kennedy High School. Um, the Wheaton High School ones are Wednesday, May twenty eighth, and the Kennedy High, uh, High School ones are Thursday, May twenty ninth. They are very intentionally trying to move the location around a little bit within the areas affected. So the last uh, community engagement sessions were at Walter Johnson High School. So now we're at, uh, Wheaton and then Kennedy. So if you have an opportunity to be engaged, either virtually or in person, I really recommend that you do so to learn where they're at. Um, shortly, uh, after these sessions, um, or these sessions should, yes, these sessions should present the first round of options for boundaries. There is going to be an iterative process. They are going to present the first rounds. They will take community feedback and engagement. They will see if they want to alter them for a second round, which will come out, uh, more in August. Again, take feedback and then have what would be the third round or seemingly uh, the, the, the version that they are ready to recommend by September. They have to, as it was expressed at the original meeting, they have to keep to the timeline somewhat because they have to have these to the school board. They need to have them approved by March so that they can then begin doing facility bus food service planning for uh, twenty twenty eight when they are to go into effect. This is everything from notifying you know, households, you know, where catchment areas have changed, redoing bus routes, uh, you know, efficiency planning of all that. So, um, there, if you want to get engaged, you gotta, you, you got the twenty seventh and twenty eighth.
And, and it's really important because this is, you know, boundary talk on our schools. So please stay engaged. Uh, we don't have, uh, again, we don't have much control in this, but it's important to be engaged and I want to thank Connor for going to the meetings, which aren't always the most exciting things in the world to, uh, spend your evenings at.
It will be now.
But it's really important because, um, I know, um, you know, what you, you buy a house sometimes around schools, there's an expectation. I don't think it's touching elementary schools, is that correct?
No, this one is not. The, the boundaries for elementary schools are going to remain unchanged. But from there on, all feeding middle schools and the high schools um, that touch all the rezoned areas. So it's, it's a significant part of the school district will all be affected.
Right. Alright, thank you very much. Uh, just real, real quick, um, I want to just mention the day of the book. It was great. We had super weather. Um, I don't know who got to come down. I did see Anne, did you make it down?
I was there for the parade.
Okay. Wasn't that great? Somebody asked me if I wanted to wear one of those big heads. I said, no, I know, it's like, no, thank you. Anyway, but that was very cool. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, Marco, Joe and Jason, our Public Works, who worked all day. They started at six, they didn't get back until eight thirty at night. It was a long day. Uh, a lot of it is just waiting because they can't open Howard Avenue till all those tents are down. So some of it was a lot of waiting. But I want to thank them for, uh, their work and as well as our staff in office. I know, um, Alex was doing a lot of the no parking signs. And a few more were added on at the very end. So, uh, thank you all. It's, uh, these events are a lot of work for our staff. And I appreciate all the effort they put into it. Um, I just, uh, want to say that I did attend the Jewish Heritage Recognition at County Council on Thursday. It was a great event. Uh, good turnout. And then when I was done with that, I went on down to, uh, Penn Stripes, uh, to attend the Jubilee Champion Breakfast. Uh, Jubilee is a big presence in our town. They, um, and they're very happy about the, um, program that they've now, um, added, which is to train people to work with disabilities. So, um, a lot of their clients were there and it's just, it's a very moving experience to to attend one of these. Um, I want to remind the council that the last day to register for the summer conference is May twentieth. I don't know if anybody's planning on going. Might be going by myself. So, uh, I know you have a meeting on the twenty fourth, so. Or, uh, BIPPA, or not BIPPA, uh, P-BASS.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so I don't know if anybody's planning on going, but if you are, please let Susan know. Um, I also want to ask for support, ask if the council wants to support, uh, extending the sidewalk from Kensington Parkway all the way to Edgewood Road on Metropolitan. This is a request from Capital View. It's just our support for it, to send letters to our District Eighteen delegation, asking them to try to get, um, sidewalks to, uh, Edgewood. So.
It'd be on the north side.
Yep.
Uh, there's an existing sidewalk that stops within the corporate elements of the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Part of the sidewalk would be within the town and then go up to, um.
The topography is a little sketchy there, but it's, I mean, it, considering how dangerous it is to walk on Metropolitan Avenue.
Hundred percent. Yeah, this is something we talked about.
We've had some discussions with, uh, council member, um, Kate Stewart's office about this previously. Uh, we have been supportive in the past.
Yeah, it is a state road, so we'd need to get state highway involved with it. So, um, see if we can. I know. So we'd like to get a, yeah, I told, uh, Beth Weaver's the one that reached out to me and I told her we would, I would ask for. Um, do you guys want to put the letter together or do you want to? Uh, just a bottle of water. Unfortunately, it didn't break. Do you guys want to give some comment about it and then we put a letter together?
They, is there a, um, is there a letter that they sent to us?
Uh, she's gonna let me know. She's gonna send me a draft of the letter and then we'll review it. Can I get P-BASS to review it? Great. Okay, super. Uh, the, you want to talk about the sidewalk on, uh, Wheatley? Up to St. Paul.
And I have no problem supporting this one because it's not even all, all the.
He can give an update on, definitely on the.
I, I can add it. Cause I put it in the email to the council. So there is an update, a slight update.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I want to, uh, I think, uh, by June, uh, since the budget will be done in, uh, this month, uh, maybe we can reach out to Kate Stewart's office about an H O C meeting?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so I'd like to definitely do it over the summer, for sure, before people go too, too far away. Um, I also was on a call on Friday morning, um, with, uh, Dr. Stoddard and some other people from, um, the County Executive's Office and the other municipalities, particularly, uh, Tacoma Park, Rockville and, um, Gaithersburg, um, about how to deal with ice coming into their towns as well as the federal worker, workforce and, uh, federal grants. It was a little depress- depressing. Uh, especially on the ice. Uh, we're not touched as much by it as, because we don't do social services, but our, um, municipality, our larger municipalities are and it's, um, it's, it was, it was a really um, difficult call to be on because the, there's so much uncertainty in the world right now that they don't know how to, uh, address it. A lot of the grants are being pulled. If the, if the uh, Congress had passed these grants and that's illegal, Trump can't just, you know, cancel them because Congress has approved them. But you have to go to court to do that. So a lot of the smaller nonprofits don't have the money to do that. Um, you know, they said the county can, but it's expensive. You know, they can just barely, you know, to do it. And they have no idea what kind of grants are going to be available, uh, when they, um, in the new budget, when the new budget is ever passed. So, um, but the whole thing is just, um, it's, it's, you feel it more in our larger cities in Montgomery County than we do here. And it's out there, but they're, they're living it on the street and I, I really applaud what they're trying to do and how difficult it is. So. So let's, when we complain about other things, let's think about what our other municipalities and the county are facing and some of the people that are living. Okay, um, so that's all I've got. So any questions regarding our reports?
Do we have a, um, you sent an email about this and I'm not sure if it happened already, the donuts with the.
Oh, yeah, donuts tomorrow morning.
Is it tomorrow?
Yeah, uh, uh, coffee, donuts, coffee with a cop.
Yeah, it's coffee.
Coffee with a cop is tomorrow, uh, nine to ten thirty at M and T Bank. Everybody's welcomed. Um, so, uh, I'll be there at nine. Uh, we have a meeting at nine thirty. Yeah, so it's nine to nine, ten thirty. So come out and, uh, meet Officer, um, Johnson and as well as, um, give support to our M and T, um, people that work in the bank. Those people, we like those people. They are, they're super nice. And, uh, you know, and they've been, you know, they were robbed twice. It's, uh, which is very traumatic for them. And, uh, so I think showing the support is, uh, really important. So. Yeah, so, okay, so that's, that's what I've got. Okay.
Um, we've completed the paving of Howard Avenue. Um, the intersection of Howard Avenue and Armory Avenue, uh, will be, uh, transitioned over to an always stop tomorrow. Uh, which is new. Uh, we will have a formal traffic order before the council next month. Uh, we wanted it to be posted before we brought the traffic order, uh, so there will be a change there, a noticeable change. Uh, we did this at the recommendation of the traffic, um, engineer. The concern about the pedestrian movements at the intersection and the amount of movement from vehicles, specifically Safeway traffic. Uh, so we think this will, um, be a safer alternative, so. It's the, uh, intersection of Armory Avenue and Howard Avenue, the corner where the clock shop is.
And the, the gas station.
The gas station. So that is going to become an always stop. Uh, means, um, east and westbound Howard Avenue and northbound Armory will all have to stop. Um, so there's going to be a crosswalk. It's not outlined yet. Uh, the striping company is about two weeks out. Uh, but the stop sign is going to go up tomorrow. Uh, we anticipate, uh, the first few weeks will probably be a little challenging with the new signage. Um, you'll see some orange flags and some new, new signposts and everything.
Uh, Matt, can I interrupt you? Um, Anne has to drop off at nine, so can we go ahead and do the voting on the ordinances? So that she can, uh, participate in that?
Sure. Uh, so I will start with, uh, ordinance number O dash zero two dash twenty twenty five. Uh, this is an ordinance of the mayor and town council of Kensington to appropriate and adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six F Y twenty six budget and levy a tax on certain real property and personal property. Uh, within the, uh, tax property article, the Annuated Code of Maryland, we held the public hearing at the April Town Council Meeting. Uh, public comments were accepted until four PM this past Friday, which is May second. We received one additional comment. Uh, it was provided to the mayor and council, uh, through your email. Um, and we, uh, need to pass this tonight because we are required to provide the, uh, tax rate to the state.
Okay. Alright, uh, we are not taking any further comments on this. Uh, so I just need a motion.
Yeah, so I need to, uh, request the council to make one amendment to the introduced ordinance. Uh, it is to accept eight hundred thousand dollars from the state of Maryland to through, through two separate bond bills that were previously allocated to, uh, the Flats of No Station project. They've been rea- reappropriated for the acquisition of the M and T drive-through property on Montgomery Avenue. Uh, these funds will be taken in under the grant line item as general revenue and will be, uh, allocated within the C I P to um, general government acquisitions lined for the acquisition of the M and T bank property.
Thank you. Alright.
You can just do as amended.
I, I saw you, I wrote it down. Yes, but I would. That we adopt budget ordinance O dash zero two dash twenty twenty five as amended.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Anne. Okay, number two?
Uh, ordinance number O dash zero three dash twenty twenty five is an ordinance of the mayor and town council of Kensington to amend Chapter Five Housing Building Regulations by enacting Article Seven Transient Lodging Facilities to incorporate Chapter Fifty Four of the Montgomery County Code entitled Transient Lodging Facilities, which contains various provisions to protect, regulate and license hotels, bed and breakfast and short-term residential rentals and to make conforming changes. Uh, we, uh, held the public hearing at our April council meeting. The, uh, public hearing uh, was held open until four PM this past Friday. We received no additional comments. Uh, this ordinance would allow the town, in addition to Montgomery County, to regulate specifically Airbnbs, which is why this ordinance was presented before the council.
Does the council have any questions? Hey, we're not taking public comment. I need a motion.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number O dash zero three dash twenty twenty five.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Alright, resolution?
Resolution number R dash zero nine dash twenty twenty five is a resolution of the Kensington Town Council, extending appointments made by the mayor for all members of the Development Review Board, D R B, in an effort to adjust the service terms in accordance with the town's annual organizational meeting and council assignments. This affects the, uh, direct appointments of, uh, Mark Hudson and Leslie Maxim. It will be extended uh, until the council holds its organizational meeting in July and then does the same, uh, for the additional members of the D R B next year. So once council assignments are made at the organizational meeting, we're, we're no longer trying to shuffle uh, the D R B and not necessarily know who the council liaises on.
Okay. Alright, council, have any questions? Okay, this is a resolution. Any comments from the, uh, from the audience? Don't see any hands. Can I get a motion?
Sure. Let me adopt resolution R dash zero nine dash twenty twenty five.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Alright.
Thank you, council. Last resolution, R dash ten dash twenty twenty five is a resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington approving a variance to allow an encroachment of eight inches into the side yard setback for the property located at one zero two two three Summit Avenue in accordance with section five dash one oh four building lines of the town code. Uh, we held a variance hearing at the April council meeting. We received no additional comment. Um, we were directed by the council to, um, put together a resolution in favor of the encroachment into the side yard step back.
Okay, council, have any questions? Anybody in the audience have a question? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution R dash ten dash twenty twenty five.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Anne, thank you for joining us and we look forward to when you can come home.
Thank you for accommodating my travel. I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you, bye-bye. Alright, so let's go back to the, uh, town manager report.
Uh, any additional questions on the intersection? Okay, yeah, so we'll do the formal traffic order next month, uh, that the council will have to adopt. And like I said, the striping contractor is scheduled right now for the week of the nineteenth. So, uh, the center line, the, uh, crosswalks, uh, we will be installing stop ahead decals on the actual pavement. Uh, during this, at the new intersection, allway intersection, we will also be adding one on the eastbound uh, direction at the train station to notify individuals that there is a pedestrian crossing there. Uh, one of our inlet parking spaces kind of obstructs the view of motorists. We discussed about removing that parking space and didn't think that was justified. So we're going to put the stamped head crossing signal ahead just prior to that crosswalk. This, uh, striping contract will also include, um, pedestrian crossing ahead at, uh, the intersection of Flyers, Milton, Wheatley, at the recommendation of the traffic engineer. We received some feedback a few months back from residents. Uh, you'll also see some signage improvements in that location as well over the next month.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah.
Council, any questions regarding these? Anybody in the audience have a question? Okay.
Um, we have a verbal agreement in place with, uh, the resident of Wheatley Street whose property we're trying to get an easement for to get the, uh, Oberon sidewalk. Alex and I met with him earlier this week. Uh, we're pretty confident that we have an agreement in place. We sent along all the information to the town attorney, the draft and easement. Um, I'm hoping to have that before the council next month. That is kind of the biggest step we have. Um, at least, you know, legally and everything that we need to do. Depending on what the council directs staff to do, it's most likely that we will start the Oberon sidewalk project sometime this calendar year. I don't know how far it will get. Our plan is to at least go to Oberon at this point and then figure out, uh, there's some right-of-way issues that we need to get through uh, with a couple residents, uh, between the intersection of Oberon and Kensington Parkway and the actual park. Uh, but at least the major hurdle for us looks like it's going to be completed, so.
So just for clarity, while the resident that you have the easement for is addresses on Wheatley, this is for rear of the property on Kensington Park.
Correct, yes.
To extend the sidewalk from
The office.
The office building to the corner of Oberon.
Correct. We, we have requested, um, an easement of over seventeen hundred square feet. Correct. We, we have requested um an easement of over seventeen hundred square feet, which is a lot. Uh, there will be some compensation involved. Uh, that will be before the council, hopefully next month. Uh, there's a curve cut involved. Um, and there will be some removal of some trees. Uh, any trees that we are removing in this project, it's more of a street escape. Once we're completed, will all be replanted um and off of our uh, our, our fruit tree list, so.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? You have to go, uh, you got, you seriously, no, you have. I know, sorry. You should just sit on that side.
I almost feel like I wanna ask this after the meeting, but it's a quick question. Um, have we discussed as a town sort of Dietrich and Knowles, that intersection?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, well.
It's Knowles is a state road.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a state road. Um, eh, as uh Councilmember Angle mentioned earlier this evening, we, we do meet with the state highway administration. Um, I'm gonna leave it at that, but they are aware of our concerns. Um, it may be something that we end up doing ourselves. I don't know. Um, but we state highways aware of.
Okay. Yeah, there's not a lot of choices there.
What was your specific concern? Because it's good to hear from.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, the specific concern is varied, given that my daughter is always crossing the street right there. Um, that without a crosswalk, it's extraordinarily dangerous. So I try to tell her to go up, but she's a teenager, you know, kind of. She, she doesn't listen to me. Um, it's really dangerous and the hedges on the owner's property that's on the corner of Dietrich and Knowles that is across from the Wynton and Company shop. They, they have been cut, but I'm wondering like, how frequent is that gonna be? Because for years, it was sort of overgrown and I, and I know that they take care of the, actually they're in the yard quite a bit trying to take care of the property, but the hedges are a little bit dangerous. The angle, all of it uh creates for really dangerous conditions for pedestrians. And we just have several businesses that are, you know, patronized by people who live in that section that walk across that street all the time. I've sat on that corner and seen at least like five near-death experiences. And so I was just curious because I haven't.
Have you seen the people from Silver Creek? They cut, they walk out their door and just cross four lanes of highway.
Yes. Yes. So.
I mean, it's just ridiculous.
We've asked them to study it because.
Yes.
I mean, there's two crossings of Knowles at Connecticut.
And Summit.
And Summit.
Yes.
And I live in that neighborhood too, as you know, and we whenever I'm with my, I shouldn't say this, but I look at my kids, I go to the, the lights, right, going on by myself, I just.
You go yourself. Everybody.
Technically, it's a crosswalk. It's just unmarked.
It's curb, it's corner to corner.
But um, so we're, we're working to figure out how we can um on the north side of the street narrow the road to connect closer the sidewalks, because there's a long way of the walk when you're on the north side
Yes.
from Knowle Station over to Strohs Snyder's. Um, can they kind of bump it out and widen it? Um, so they're studying that, but then also we've asked them to study where, where, what should they do with that intersection? Should they um, how do they mark it? Do they mark it? Do they direct people very clearly to the other intersections? Should they do something where it's a little bit more visible crosswalk?
Yes.
Um, and we've been told that they're looking at it. And.
There is a seven-year plan.
Yes.
They are looking, they're looking more at the improvements on the north side between the east and west.
Okay.
Um, I will say historically, as long as I've been here, they have shied away from putting a designated crosswalk at the intersection. Um, they're looking at it. I will say, it, I, it is unlikely that they would put one there unless there was some other change. The, the concern is the traffic movements and, and the visibility if, unless there was some kind of safe zone in the center. I just don't know.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the, the main thing that they're looking at right now is to change the turning rate I on the north side.
Yes.
At the shopping center side and closing that in and bringing it closer.
And, and that has its own issues because um Strohs Snyder's, you know, the big trucks, the eighteen-wheelers come around that corner to unload and they need a wider space, especially if a car is, is at the stop sign. So every solution has, brings a problem.
Unintended consequences.
Absolutely. So it, it is a very big challenge. I'm in the last townhouse and I've lived there for forty-five years and it has been bad for the entire time I've lived here.
Yeah.
So it's, it is definitely, uh, and I, like Nate, depending on the time of day, I will go down. But I like to cross the two lanes instead of now the four. So I'll go over to the Kaiser's house at that corner
Yeah.
and cross two lanes instead of four lanes on the other side. But yeah, it's, it's a challenge. I don't even now am comfortable making a left in my car a certain times of the day. It's, I just go down to Prospect's, get on Summit and go and sit in line and then go to the light, but it's, it's a challenge.
We keep telling them is that we wanna, we want this studied and addressed before there's something. So we don't have to act in reaction to.
Yes, anything tragic.
Serious tragedy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Now.
No, no, thank you for asking.
Somebody needs to get on PBAS.
We're accepting new members.
I know. What else we got? Is it, oh, uh, what's, when are they starting the uh stormwater on Hadley?
Um, you should see some activity maybe next week.
Okay.
Uh, you might see some traffic barrels and you'll probably see some paint lines for where the actual.
Okay, and the residents have been informed that.
They've been informed. We told them, uh, our hope was by the second week of May. Uh, now whether they're actually soft cutting next week is unlikely, but they're, they'll, they'll at least see some activity, uh, maybe some chalk lines and and stuff.
Okay, okay, so that's coming. Um, I do want to uh thank uh the staff as well as Kate Stewart's staff. And I'm assuming Parks for finally clearing out the culvert at Kensington Parkway and Frederick Avenue. It has been a mess. There's been a lot of back and forth. The, the amount of debris that was stacked up, you basically had about this much light in the bridge, under the bridge. It was in the amount of trash that was backed up. You know, water wasn't really flowing on the other side and there was a lot of back and forth between our staff and Parks. Uh, Paul Ellis, who is the Assistant Chief of Staff for Kate Stewart's office and Park saying, no, no, it's your responsibility, it's your responsibility, you're responsible. No, it's never been our responsibility. The bridge is our responsibility, but what's under the bridge is not our responsibility. So finally got worked out. They've cleared it. But you know, this, there's a tremendous amount of time that is spent on these things that should just be taken care of with a simple report. So, you know, when you say, well, how come you haven't gotten it? Cause you're dealing with this stuff, which can just take a lot of time. So if we were successful, I'm very pleased um, that we got it done. So thank you, Matt, for all the work you did for that and um, and everybody involved. So water is flowing again on the south side of town. Anyway, okay, anything else from you guys? We're good?
I think we're good.
Questions before we go into public appearances? I know it's late. I'm sorry. We had a lot of activi- uh, things that were um very important to talk about, especially uh for Anne before she had to jump off. So if there's anything that you would like to bring up, it's not on the agenda. This is your opportunity to do so. Stuart?
Sure.
I know, she's talked a lot already. I know.
Hey, good evening. Stuart's Parker, Oberon Street. I just wanted to say that I'm gonna be running for town council this election.
Good.
Um, I wanted to introduce myself to the folks in the town, make a public record for uh public appearance for the record. Um, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, I look forward to working with the town and building upon the great success you all have had.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up to the plate. Appreciate it. He might be. Yeah. Uh, Joe?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Furman. Uh, I was wondering if uh, if there's any other election updates uh, since we are about three and a half weeks away from the town election, if there are other candidates that we know of or who have submitted their certificate of nomination form.
Well, we're happy to tell you it's public information, but you don't have two and a half or three and a half weeks. You have really a few days because the last day for the nomination is Monday, the twelfth. So.
I know that. That's not what I'm asking, though. I'm saying, do you have any updates on the, on the town election, which is in three and a half weeks? I know the deadline is the twelfth of May for the nomination.
But then you would know who the candidates are.
I'm just asking if there are any other updates that you have, that you know of. Uh, Councilmember Bartram said last month that he would make an announcement or make it known, I guess, at the, tonight's meeting. Maybe he did in indirect way, but um, I'm not sure if he's rang again or Councilmember Connor Crimmens is. So, any updates?
I, I've not filed and I'm not planning to run.
And I have filed.
Okay. See, that wasn't too hard. And um, finally, uh, at the, the bridge that you mentioned, Mayor Furman, a few moments ago at Kensington Parkway and Frederick Avenue, will there be follow-ups by the county or and/or the town to make sure that the, that Silverbrook continues to flow and that uh this backup of debris and, and other pollutants is uh, is taken care of once and for all?
Uh, well, with Public Works is over there uh checking out Silver Creek. Uh, they will, you know, if there's a problem, they'll let us know. But we do in some ways rely on some of our residents to, you know, on certain things to keep us posted. They see something, say something.
Yeah, I mean, this is a perfect example that the initial report came from a resident just walking uh along Kensington Parkway, took the photo, texted it and was like, this seems not right. And so uh, that's how this issue came to the town's attention. So if you're out, walking your dog and see a bunch of debris, it doesn't seem right. Just send, you know, send an email, send a text.
Yeah, obviously, that makes sense. But uh, for Silver Creek, uh, I just wonder if there's gonna be continuing uh surveillance by town or county. That's the question I had, to make sure that this problem doesn't recur.
I mean, I, I say that because I, I know you're a big walker and you're down there. If you see something, you just snap a photo and text it?
Yeah, I have no problem doing that and, and you know that's the case, but uh, I'm not always looking under the bridge for, for accumulated debris since that's a county and/or town responsibility. But nonetheless, um, I hope it's, uh, I hope that problem has passed.
Yeah, we, we will be tougher on Parks to take care of their, their water. Okay. Anything else? So when are we meeting again, guys? Let's see. We are meeting on Wednesday, June eleventh. Does that work for everybody?
We'll be out of.
Are you? I know, we don't wanna.
Out of town. So I feel like we should reschedule.
Um.
Budget, budget numbers go in tomorrow.
Putting, we've covered everything. So I think we're good. Yeah, nothing like going to Louisiana in July.
Oh. I mean, I would say I've more or less done.
I know.
Like little thermostat on the car, just stop.
Yeah, it's uh, it's pretty miserable. Okay. Your daughter doesn't become a chief petty officer very often. So her brother's coming, which is great. So he's a chief master sergeant in the Air Force. They're proud of my kids. You can tell. Okay, so I guess I need a motion to adjourn. Darren, you wanna? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?